The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, the invocation will be given by Commissioner Shaw.
Dear Lord, hear the prayers of those who call upon you so that we may be enlightened and led to the truth in the task we share together. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to excuse Commissioner Joseph from this evening's meeting?
I move to excuse Commissioner Joseph.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
They've probably moved and seconded to excuse Commissioner Joseph from this evening's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, so communications and petitions, Ms. Blackshear.
The microphone chart won't work.
Hold it. Okay. It's a little late.
There we go.
There's something?
There you go.
Okay, good.
We got to start all, I'm just ready.
No, no. I was going to ask the same question. Thank you. So we're good. So communications and petitions.
There are none, Your Honor.
There are none. Okay. So we do have presentation, being one of our favorite presentations. Mr. Gondal is not here, but in his place, we have Mr. James McDaniel. Please come to the podium to share with us the monthly demolition update. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Clerk, City Manager. All right, so I brought a little backup today since I'm filling in for Steve, Mr. Gondal. So I have Ken Jackson here with me. So today, we're talking about the Dayton Recovery Plan, the demolition monthly updates. As he said before, we have some pretty good numbers for the month of June. So the total of planned demolitions, we're looking at 1,168. The total demolitions for 2023, 188. Total demolitions 2024, we have 2,000, I'm sorry, 208. And the total demolitions for 2025, structures were at 141. That was 34 ARPA and the general fund, we have nine, and ODOD, we have 98. Total completed demolitions for June, as far as the structures, we have 41 for the Total piles, you see the May numbers, 68, the piles removed, June, 10. We added one, so right now, we're at 59. That right there is the one, the emergency demo that we had for the month of June, so that's promising right there. So next slide, we have for the month of June, our demolitions. You can see, as we have the some in the city, we have a couple of outliers for the other surrounding areas in the county. Demolitions since January 1, you can see right there, like I said, the ones on the outskirts, the ones that we do for the land bank and whatnot. Move on to, I'm sorry. Structures added to the nuisance list for 2025, 52. Puts us for January, we had eight, February, nine, March, we have nine, April, 10, May, 16, and June, six. Of those six, four of them were fire damage. The pipeline, right now, we did not have any title reports, best surveys or vaccinations for June. We do have a lot on the way for July, so, but we are in a pretty good place. Right there, we have 715 North Gettysburg, let's see, that was the apartment complex. And we also have 784 Goodlow. 28 Crown and 1905 Arlene. There's 4309 Euchelberg and 5149 Hoover. And that's all we have, that's all I have for June. Have any questions?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. It's always good to see progress. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Turner Sloss, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McDonald, for stepping in for Mr. Gondal this evening. Great work, happy to see the progress. If you could go back two slides for me, please. I just wanted to pose a question in regards to the area that you identified on the map initially for the fire pile, emergency demolition. Do you know where exactly that is located? And you can provide this information to us later offline if need be, if you don't have that readily available. Do you know what chart I'm speaking of?
I can get that to you.
Okay, I appreciate it. And then, in terms of, and this is exactly where I wanted to be, thank you, in terms of the structures that have been demolished thus far, are we up to date from the contract that we awarded in 2024 that we had to go back and re-award, I believe, in the first of this year? Where are we on that contract? Do you know what I'm speaking of?
I do, and I will have to get with you.
Okay, later, that's fair.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to see if we are able to address those number of structures that we had to rebid, or that contract that we had to rebid from those structures that were on the list from prior to. And then, my final question is, now that we're out of ODOD, right, we met the deadline, we're now moving forward with the dollars that have been designated for the ARPA projects and additional CDBG and all other funding?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild.
No, thank you for the update. This is always helpful to see and see the progress we're making, and it's nice to see that we took down 10 fire piles and only added one, so big gain on that number, so good work.
Thank you.
Likewise, yeah, thanks for the work, thanks for the update. Seems like we're making progress, and that's always good. Thanks.
Yeah, that is a good ratio. The question I have is, with the rain seemingly like almost every day or every other day, it's amazing to be able to make this kind of progress even throughout the rain. Has that happened too much in terms of the rain delays, or has rain delayed too much in terms of going through what you've been going through?
I think the demolition guys are geared up for the rain.
They are geared up for it.
Yeah, so we had to clean a couple of streets afterwards, but we made it through it.
Okay, all right. Next slide, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, good work.
So, Ms. Blackshear, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I was informed that we did not approve the minutes for last week, so we needed to go back and do that. Yes, last week's meeting, minutes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, let's do that then.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on?
July 23rd.
July 23rd.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, so they've probably moved and seconded to approve the minutes from July 23, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, so, Ms. Blackshear, calendar items, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I would like to request the addition of legislation pertaining to the public hearing at the desire of the commission.
Okay, yes, we do that.
That's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Dixie, any deletions or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this evening's calendar. There's an item I would like to, two items I'd like to highlight. One is Item B3, which is a construction contract, award of contract. This is our CDBG asphalt resurfacing. This actually is a rebid, but it will provide paving for 14 streets and 60-plus alleys throughout the city, projected to be completed this fall, and we're excited to continue to invest in our neighborhood streets. The second item is C4, which is a legal settlement with CenterPoint Energy. This is, we intervened on a CenterPoint settlement case, and there are three items that will, that are coming out of that negotiation before you today. One is to provide $3.75 million over the, over a five-year period for disadvantaged community energy initiatives. This is a fund that CenterPoint will establish, and the city can apply for. There is also going to be $625,000 for bill payment assistance, that's over five years. And then finally, a fee waiver program for customers who qualify for the HEAT program or the PIP, the Percentage of Payment Plan, programs. So those are benefits that our community will be able to receive as a result of the staff negotiation with CenterPoint. And that's all I have.
Okay, good. So, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on the City Manager's recommendations?
None on calendar items, Your Honor.
Okay, so Commissioners, Commissioner Turner Sloss, questions, comments on the City Manager's recommendations?
No, very briefly, thank you, Mayor, just very briefly, thank you, Ms. Dixie, for providing additional context. As you mentioned, just wanted to highlight that the asphalt resurfacing calendar, if I have that correct, has just been released from our Public Works Department, and so I know we have that readily available, so people can in fact see which streets are going to be repaved during this time period through 2027. The other thing that I wanted to make mention to is Item Number Four. This is in addition to the CenterPoint legal settlement, and kudos to the staff, our Law Department, as well as the Sustainability Office, but this is also in addition to AES, like we just received an update from AES, is that correct? That will also help with?
That was the, that was on calendar the last week or two, that is a settlement with AES.
Exactly, yes. So again, I just wanted to make reference to that and acknowledge the work of our Sustainability Office, as well as our Law Department. Thank you.
Ms. Fairchild.
No comment.
It's none for me.
Okay, we're good. All right, then, may I have a motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations?
I move to approve the City Manager's recommendations.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to approve the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, legislation, please, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading ordinance number 32155-25, amending revised code of general ordinances, Sections 52.01, 52.03, 52.04, 52.05, 52.08, 5210, 5211, 52.13, and 52.14 pertaining to the regulation of the use of public and private sewers and drains and the discharge of rain and waste into the public sewer system. Second reading resolution number 6877-25, honorarily naming Gettysburg Park as Joshua Dunbar Park for a two-year period. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading resolution number 6878-25, approving the downtown Dayton Special Improvement District petition and plan for services to be provided by the downtown Dayton Special Improvement District. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
That concludes the legislation, Your Honor.
Okay, so we now have a public hearing. I want to open the public hearing. Ms. Dixie, please proceed.
Your Honor, I'd like to call forward Jen Hanauer of our planning staff to lead us through the public hearing.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jen Hanauer, I'm in the Planning Division, I'm also Secretary to the City Plan Board, so I ushered these amendments to our zoning code through the process. It's been almost a year for this group, but it wasn't just me, it was our whole Planning Division staff and our zoning administrator, and they're all here this evening. Way hi to the people. And so we can help answer any questions that you might have tonight, but it really took the whole group. Do I need to?
Yeah, close that one up.
Okay, so I'm sure you've all seen zoning code text amendments before, there's nothing terribly earth-shattering in this group of text amendments. However, there are a lot of them, so I'm going to try to just break them down kind of succinctly to give you a picture of what we're trying to do. But we do these zoning code text amendments pretty regularly. Part of the process, we do research, we look at what other jurisdictions are doing with their zoning code, we get input from residents in the city, and then there are kind of different types of amendments that we look at. Some are just to aid in the administering of the code, so things like clarifying definitions, things that help with procedural type of things, so just kind of housekeeping sort of stuff. And then there's keeping the code up to date, so as you'll see this evening with our marijuana regulations, we're updating our code to reflect what, how the state regulations have changed. And then, the third kind of bucket of zoning code text amendments are for keeping us in planning best practices, so things that we're seeing across the nation and local to Ohio, and making sure we're incorporating that into our zoning code to best serve our community. Okay, so in that first bucket, administering the zoning code, the amendments that we have in this batch, one looks to expand the definition for middle multifamily dwellings and permit existing multifamily dwellings in mature single-family districts, so this is kind of trying to help aid housing development, so letting those three- and four-unit multifamily dwellings that are existing kind of reactivate and be reestablished. We are also looking at the treatment of congregate care and protective care facilities, treating those more similarly. They were treated more distinctly in the code before, but they really need to be treated more similarly to one another. Adding mixed use as a permitted use in mixed-use hub districts, that sounds pretty logical, right? So there's a couple of things like that where we're just kind of clarifying and adding sense where some sense needs to be added. We're clarifying conditions for approval of ADUs in historic districts and adding an illustration of how ADUs may be added to a dwelling. That's kind of keeping up, accessory dwelling units weren't even in the code until a few years ago, and we're finding that we need to add clarification to some of the things that we've put in there, so this is kind of keeping up with that. We're updating density regulations for suburban multifamily and transitional districts. This is another one, again, to encourage some of that housing development across the city. We're clarifying height regulations in eclectic and mature multifamily districts. That's one that we're just adding a clarifying word, so that things are more clear when people are looking at our zoning code and wanting to do development. We're also updating the fees, penalties, and enforcement section of the zoning code, and that's to aid our zoning administrator in administering the code. So that second bucket, keeping the code up to date, we're, as I mentioned, updating the language to reflect the state marijuana regulations. We're clarifying and updating telecommunication tower regulations to reflect kind of the regulations in the municipalities around us, so that Dayton doesn't become the place you go to when you can't go to somewhere else. We're going to be more in line with places like Kettering, Centerville. And also adding food trucks and graffiti to the zoning code, which had not been expressly pulled out before. So that third bucket, reflecting planning best practices, things like updating the bike, EV, and vehicle parking regulations, the world is changing, Dayton's changing with it, and adding some bike and electric vehicle regulations in there, reducing vehicle parking regulations is keeping up with best practices across the nation. Adding a minor record plan to the zoning code, it had not previously been defined, and so all record plans needed to go through the same long process, but by adding a minor record plan, we can provide better customer service and get some of those smaller projects through with less, in less time. Adding commercial design standards to suburban general commercial districts with language to ensure pedestrian safety, that's something that had been overlooked in the past, but something that we want to add now to ensure a safe pedestrian experience in all of our commercial districts. And then removing indoor self-storage facilities as a permitted use in commercial downtown and mixed-use districts, so we have a more activated downtown and makes it a little harder for those kind of inactive uses, like an indoor storage facility from going into our downtown and commercial districts. This is just a table of all 17 of the zoning code text amendments that are in the ordinance, this is just for reference, we don't have to read through all of those. I'm just going to pull out three of the zoning code text amendments that are examples of what we're trying to do with our amendments. Again, we do these pretty regularly, but that, removing density maximums from suburban multifamily and traditional districts. So density ends up being a result of our requirements for things like bulk and scale and setback, so there's not really a need to add a density requirement on top of that. Those other regulations that we have already kind of set the number where it needs to be, so by removing that density requirement, we're removing a barrier to housing development. So that's just an example of where we're trying to move with our zoning code. This is the minor record plan, so this would allow, you know, we have the same process for a record plan that's for, you know, a big subdivision, that putting in hundreds of housing units and has a developer, has somebody dedicated to take that all through, it's the same process if there is somebody that wants to combine their two lots so that they can put up a shed. And we thought that that needed to be corrected and a minor record plan process put in place so that those two things, projects aren't needing to go through the same process. And then, the one about the food trucks, itinerant vendors, and graffiti, as I mentioned, food trucks wasn't previously really defined in the zoning code, it was kind of part of itinerant vendors. We also didn't have a provision for temporary use, so we've added a use is not listed, and we also now have a definition for graffiti and a mechanism so that the zoning administrator can enforce its removal. So this is all to help us with creating a more timely permitting process, which we've heard feedback from residents and developers, that that can be a frustrating process, so these are all steps to get us moving a little quicker. So the public process, what this is like, so far, we had a couple of work sessions at the end of last year at Plan Board. We also had all of our land use boards come together, we held a lunch and learn where we went through everything, everybody got to ask questions. We, planning staff ultimately recommended approval to the City Plan Board at the meeting back in January of this year, and then Plan Board had a few tweaks they wanted to make for it, but unanimously voted to recommend approval to City Commission. So this is just a first reading, but when it does come time, these will be your decision options. So I am happy to answer any questions that you might have, and then I brought a whole cavalry of people to help you with questions I don't know.
Okay, so first of all, you make this whole aspect of zoning sound very exciting.
Yeah.
Okay, so I really appreciate that. And first, before we go with any Commissioners who would like to ask questions, do we have any citizens, Ms. Blackshear, who want to speak on the public hearing?
None on the public hearing, Your Honor.
Okay, all right, so Commissioners, Commissioner Turner Sloss, questions or comments relative to the public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hanauer and team and the entire department for all of the great work that has been committed to the text amendments and the number of sessions that you had throughout the community, the lunch and learns and so on, so thank you. Question in regards to the removal of graffiti. Understand that that is a pressure point, and it is of high concern, but in that, is there an opportunity for designated areas, like what does that look like in the rezoning, or is there room for any of that that is listed, is it laid out?
That is a wonderful question. Is that in reference to like, for like, public art type purposes?
Exactly, yes.
Or that kind of thing? I don't want to misspeak, and I do have our zoning administrator here if I might bring her up to answer.
Please, thank you.
Good evening. Kirsten.
Evening.
Would you, can you rephrase or state that again, you're asking about?
Just asking, and thank you, Ms. French, asking if there is a designated area, what is the process? I know that we, it is a pressure point for the removal of graffiti, especially some of our signage are more on the corridors, and so public defacing, like we want to eliminate that, and we don't want to walk on that by no means. But the question is, is there an opportunity, or does it state in the text amendments where there is a process for public art display for graffiti?
Oh, I see. Okay, so the definition of graffiti is going to be something that was not permitted by the owner to be put up, does not receive a permit from our office. There's also a mural designation, so if you have applied for a permit, you have a design intent to the art that you're trying to put up, you showed us that in advance, we can say that's a mural, that's illegal graffiti that was put there by somebody else and was unauthorized. So there would be, this gets removed either by us noticing it and following a regular process of notifying a property owner. Of course, a mural can stay.
That's why in 2025, we're launching a peace campaign that will help our residents be defined.
Good. Commissioner Fairchild.
We'll be working closely with community leaders to develop programs and initiatives that will address the common goal.
Have they been shared with the public, or is this the first time they've been shared?
Yeah, we created an FAQ page on the city's website where we posted the draft and recordings of the lunch and learn and the Plan Board meeting, so that people could review that if they weren't able to attend. We have received some questions, the email, phone calls, that we've been addressing as they come in, so yes.
And I think you said there's going to be changes in terms of fees and enforcement. They want to live in a place where they're safe.
Could you go a little deeper on that?
They want to be a part of the solution. They don't want something to be done to them, and they absolutely believe that there is something worth fighting for in their community.
So you've been encouraging a process of going from criminal enforcement to civil on the housing code side of things. The zoning code has always had a mechanism for both. One issue with using civil enforcement for the zoning code is that usually we're looking at commercial issues, and right now, our fees are, our fines, I'm sorry, are $50 a day, $500 maximum, which is just ineffective for almost every case. What's changing is that we will basically be realigning the fines to the way they look in the source water protection district area, which is $1,000 a day maximum, and then by policy, we are obviously not starting with that for most properties, that's for the most egregious things, but we need to have that as an option. Use a hammer when you need it, but for the most part, small businesses, that kind of thing, you know, you'd start with your $100 a day kind of fine if they're not able to comply within a reasonable timeframe. So that's the majority of the updates there, and then we have basically reformulated that chapter just to be more comprehensible.
And is there a difference between residential and commercial property in terms of fines?
By policy, yes. We have a policy document that we will also be publishing, but we've kind of reviewed all of that internally with law, just basically setting things that are reasonable and comparing them to that Chapter 61 that you're familiar with.
So what we're putting into this, into these policies, this is a broad framework, and then we'll have?
It doesn't make sense to us, I guess, to change the ordinance and then leave it so that it falls behind. We'd rather just keep those shades of nuance of all the differences, different circumstances that are out there in a policy document that we can publish, everybody can access it, we do the same thing every time, we don't, you know, vary from that policy document, but it's, what's codified is the maximum rather than?
Okay, right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
Good, thank you.
Good? Okay. Good, okay. I'm good as well, so before we close the public hearing, ask the commissioners, which you will, move forward?
I would like to move forward.
Okay, okay, let's do that. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Blackshear, please proceed.
The legislation implementing zoning case number PLN 2024-00417 will be ordinance number 32154-25. It will receive a first reading only. First reading ordinance number 32154-25 repealing, amending, and enacting various sections of the revised code of general ordinances relating to the zoning code. And that concludes the legislation.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
We have seven citizens who have registered. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address this commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, the yellow light will come on, you will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to see your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the City Commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I cause to the podium Ray Elson.
Ray Elson, 109 Maple Avenue. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here tonight as a member of the Dayton Tenant Union, a grassroots group led by tenants for tenants. Our mission is to build tenant power, educate residents about their rights, and push for systemic change that ensures safe, stable, and dignified housing for all. Over the past year, we've hosted dozens of community events, supported families facing crisis, and helped tenants organize around unsafe conditions and unjust evictions. Still, the need is overwhelming. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition, the average renter in Ohio must earn $19.09 an hour to afford a modest two-bedroom, yet the average renter's wage is just $17.30. In Dayton, those numbers are even starker. The math, the gap isn't just in the math, it's in eviction notices, utility shut-offs, families uprooted, and futures derailed, and that's why we're urging you to fully fund the proposed access to council program. Pilot has already shown its value, keeping families housed, protecting tenants' rights, and uncovering illegal landlord practices. The majority of clients we've served so far have been black women, many with children and with disabilities, and these are people who are the most vulnerable to eviction and the least likely to have access to council. Without council, tenants lose nearly every time. With council, they stand a fighting chance, and when tenants stay housed, kids stay in school, workers stay employed, and neighborhoods stay stable. We've come a long way, but we can't stop at a pilot, we need permanent funding, we need a city that refuses to leave its renters behind, and the Dayton Tenant Union is committed to that future, and we hope the Commission will join us in fully funding this program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
David Woods.
Hello there, Mayor and City Councilman.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Name and address.
Hello there, I've been calling the mayor.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry, name, David Woods, 3230, let me out there, I forgot that.
Thank you.
Hello there, I've been complaining about that pretty white woman chapman I was talking about, to see my dad got slapped and choked, Bernice Newish, the chapman at Ketterman Capital Hospital, and that male nurse, you know, choked him, got him to get critical. I called her, and she has not called back. I told her to call Civil Rights Commission Christine McDonald. Christine McDonald's phone number is 937-285-6511. She has not called her. I've been calling the mayor of Ketterman, Ohio, and I told her I want the chief of police of Ketterman, Ohio, to go down there and talk to Bernice Newish, the pretty white woman chapman that witnessed my dad got slapped and choked, since she's a chapman, and tell her to tell who that white man chapman was that witnessed it, and the name of that male nurse who choked my dad, which y'all have the list of the doctors and nurses, but I don't have his exact name. And the mayor still has that, I called her again, I said, I'm going to complain to the mayor of Dayton, Ohio, in the city council meeting, that I want the chief of police to come down there, and I want the chief of police to talk to that crooked racist cop, chief of police Sergeant Corey Follett, and racist cop Sergeant Mike Lane, who lied on, who, they didn't lie, but they didn't defend me when I got trespass illegally because that real racist cop, Captain Perez of Ketterman Capital Hospital, and Sergeant Scott Chamberlain lied on me, and the chief of police said that he never told that lie. He incorporated, I want her to bring the chief of police to Ketterman to speak to him, since he white, so he can speak to them racist white cops in my behalf. I haven't heard anything about that at all. So I told her I'm going to go ahead and start complaining to the mayor of Monysburg, the mayor of Oakwood, and the mayor, I go to her city council meeting, I'm going to complain about this. And I'm just not going to be in the Dayton City Council complaining. Like I said, I stand for Martin Luther King and Malcolm X. I'm dealing with this racism right now, I would never grieve for my dad for the fact that since I didn't see his dead body, and they wouldn't have handed a trespass illegally. I'm still going to sue the city for millions of dollars for them lying on me, these crooked racist cops. And I want the chief of police of Ketterman, Ohio, to go ahead and show that Ketter is not prejudiced by him going ahead and going against them, because I know the answer, which I won't, like I said, I've got a court with Judge Angela Jackson on this too. And I appreciate the mayor and city council for y'all's support too, but this is bullcrap, you know what I'm saying? My dad got choked, slapped, had my dad, my dad served the Vietnam War, had he been a white man in the Vietnam War slapped by a black male nurse and choked, they would have been on that rug real quick, and I told the mayor on that too. Civil Rights Commission Christine McDonald, she's aware of this, she's investigating Ketterman Hospital right now. I urge the public to get a test with Bernice Newish, you can get her on Instagram too, and all the white women, especially because y'all, the white race, I ask the white woman to call, that white woman, tell her to go ahead and cooperate and quit being prejudiced with these prejudice, Ketterman Hospital, I consider Ketterman Hospital KKK Hospital the fact that they covering up, and it's illegal for them to do that, and I want something done. And I appreciate the mayor and all y'all, and I support y'all.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Blackshear.
Mr. Woods. No, thank you.
Arlie Forte.
Pull the mic down closer.
Speak a little louder. Okay. Your name and address.
My name is Arlie Forte.
Your address also.
729 West Grand Avenue, Dayton, Ohio, 45406.
Good evening.
The winter of '23 and '24, I lived in an apartment. I had no heat. I did my best to stay warm. I used space heaters, I wore layer clothes, but the freezing, my utility bill went through the roof. I followed the law, I put my rent in escrow like I was supposed to, hoping to push my landlord to repair, which he never did. I reached out to the city, I even spoke to the mayor, asked for help. He took all my phone and other information, but I never heard back. And the truth is, I felt forgotten. I am, I will be 84 years old next month. I even thought I would never live through a winter like this. I would be treated like this. My health is worth. Eventually, I contacted APH, they helped me find a place, and I'm grateful for that. But not everyone like me is lucky to find an APH at that time. I am not here to point fingers, I'm here for something better, for me and everyone else that might be in my position. You included housing trust fund to the city plan, and I thank you for that, but without funding does not help peoples like me. It doesn't keep our home warm, it doesn't help peoples, it doesn't keep our home warm, it doesn't hold landlords accountable, it doesn't allow old peoples to age in peace and dignity. Please fund the housing trust fund, use it to help people to stay safe in their homes using support, repair, legal help, and basic protection. We are not asking for luxury, we are asking for minimum warm shelters and feeling that somebody else in the city cares. And if you don't mind, I would like for you all to. That's how I live from 2020 to 2024. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Destiny Brown, 1119 West Second Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45402. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here first to acknowledge the recent work session last week, to acknowledge this body's efforts around housing, and the recent session that agreed to ultimately at least list that a housing trust fund is in the purview or of interest in the discussion, and then also the decision to continue to fund the Welcome Home Program that the Land Bank hosts. So I want to commend that effort, also want to express the urgency around the need to fund, to fund things that you identify as a priority. So the Land Bank's program is wonderful, really designed to encourage more homeownership among people who otherwise may not qualify, but the reality is that a lot of renters in this city are so cost burdened with rent that they likely will not be able to buy a home for a long time. So in the interim, as they are living in rental properties, I implore you to consider the reality of what do we do to protect people if they cannot buy a home? So the decision to fund the Land Bank's program for the next four years, although it's not the worst decision that could be made, I understand that this is kind of the budgeting season, and renters are in dire need of protections, and while we have protections in the city, there is not an agency that enforces them. So we experience a lot of people who are experiencing situations that are against the law, but have no protections and no regulatory body that ensures that they are protected. If you recall, Dayton Tenant Union and other housing advocates were here to advocate for this bucket of funding under the tax levy. The money has been made available, but input was restricted around tenants being able to say where these dollars should go. So while the money sits there, people are saying, hey, we need a housing trust fund, we hear stories about our elders in our community and other people who don't have access to council, which ultimately, in a situation like Ms. Arlie's, had she not accessed ABLE or other advocates support that ensure that she found ways to navigate her escrow, found new housing for her, if you have laws in place but nobody to enforce them, and you have no attorneys available to assist people in this process, it's an all-in-boy. So what people are asking is that we see a housing trust fund that's not just a line item in a plan, but a funded idea. So a housing trust fund provides the opportunity to access for council. Now, we've seen in other cities like Columbus, $1 invested in an access to council program produces a $4 return, $24 million generated in cost reduction in other social services. So ultimately, what this means is that if on the front end, we offer council, we won't pay these costs on the back end and other social services. This could include home repairs for tenant-occupied homes, rental registry as well.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Larry Hayden.
Good evening, Commissioners and the mayor.
Good evening to you as well.
My name is Larry Hayden. I live at 4828, 4028 Indian Run Drive, Dayton, Ohio, 45415. I want to start off, I want to begin by thanking and recognizing that you recognize housing as one of the pillars in the city strategic planning. That kind of public knowledge is important, but it shows that the CDC sees what so many of us are seeing, and what we're living through, and what we've been working through for the years. But what we need right now is not just recognition, we need action. Specifically, we need funding through our tenant hotline, direct outreach, educational sessions, the Montgomery County, we've seen the death of Dayton housing crisis. We heard from parents whose children are getting sick because of mold, we met with tenants living in chip paint, mold, pest-infested, and these are just not one-off stories. These are daily reality, things that people are living with every day. While we, Dayton Tenant Union, work hard to educate about the rights, the truth is, knowledge alone will not fix a wall, knowledge alone won't remove lead, and it won't hold the landlords accountable. So we need a system, we need system-level solution, that's why the housing trust fund matters. It's a tool that can fund urgent home repair, healthy home programs, legal support, and tenant relocation. Exactly, this is exactly what, the kind of service that we hear that people are asking for every day. Right now, the trust fund is in a strategic plan, but it has no funding attached. Without money behind it, it won't move the needle for families who are being poisoned, who are being bitten, and who are being ignored. The city has named the problem, and now we want you to invest in the problem or the solution. We urge you, we urge the funding of the trust fund using available dollars and resources. Every delay, let me say that, every delay means tenants are being exposed to hazard conditions, more children at risk, and more frustration from the public that is already losing faith in the system. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
Darrell Lee.
Hello, everyone. My name, Darrell Lee, 1903 East Third Street, Dayton, Ohio, apartment 19. I'm just going to take a brief notice, I know my time started, but I'm here today, and me and God is here today, and Jesus, just like God say he is in me, just as he is in all of you. So now, let's go back to, let's speak on my life. I got 12 bullets in my body, I barely can eat, so the chief of police think it's okay for people to open carry, they think if a people get shot and come back alive, that it's a felonious assault in daytime, whatever time, 15 years, 12 years, it's worth that guy's life. Now, let's get on the back of my life and my children's life. Everyone's have children, they're in this courtroom, absolutely. Now, let's go forth. Now, if Darrell did some harm, he completed everything that the city case plan, case manager supervised.
Please, please talk to the rest of here.
Supervisors, everyone that's told me to do something wise, I have a case plan open. Now, let's get forth. Why is me and my kids suffering, and I have dockets from everywhere in the city, the state where I used to work, public places where you go eat, people that saw my kids before, why is that? I'm not dangerous, the city of Dayton, Ohio is dangerous, especially as Dayton police, they is racist. So if my mama died off fentanyl, and if I can be a clue witness to know who did this and verify and get proof, why would they want to help me over someone that's died? No further question.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Your name and address for the record.
Hello.
Hi, good morning.
Hi.
Or afternoon, sorry.
Good evening. Flora Hurston, 2914 Salem Avenue. I was here two weeks ago, I had received an objection to my liquor license renewal by the city of Dayton Police Department. I was having issues with connecting with them, and I want to thank you guys for helping facilitate that, but today, I'm here with a different concern, just a little Just a little background on my situation real quick. I received an objection for my liquor renewal by the Department of Liquor on June 24th. I had only three weeks' notice, no prior communications, no incidents, violations, citations, or anything with my business. From June 24th to July 16th, I reached out to the department relentlessly. No one actually called back until I had come here. And so that next following day, which was Detective Brian Diedrich, which was one of the persons listed on the renewal, he did reach out, but only to redirect me to Alyssa. I had spoke to Alyssa. Alyssa is for the city, she's not for me, so there's not going to be anything that she's going to say. So I just want to say, I just want to bring awareness to the disconnect from the police department and business owners in similar situations like mine. The liquor boards, they would withdraw, they could withdraw it, but how is that going to happen if there's no communication with the City Police Department? It's basically at their discretion if they want to choose to talk to you or have a conversation with you or not. When they have a direct influence on your livelihood, I don't think that's fair. I think it should be a different process. So basically, that's why I'm here today, too, is just asking for the Commission to at least recommend another step in the process to help facilitate. You know, we normal citizens, sometimes it's hard to navigate the system and figure out who to talk to, what to talk to, and they have been very dismissive. So, you know, I also want to mention, BNB Lounge is not the only business I have. I have a medical uniform store that I've been running for five years on North Main Street. We connect with colleges. We connect with high school, local high schools. We are employer of youth works, so we help, you know, hire the youth works. I'm also a public health nurse. I say that because I'm here to enhance the city, and I just want to be treated as such.
Thank you, Ms. Hurston.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
That concludes the public comments.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, Ms. Dixie, any closing comments?
Your Honor, I'd just take a couple of minutes to talk a little bit about the housing investment that we've been talking about, just to bring some broad context to light. We have, as you all know, you know, we have been heavily investing for the last few years in rehab programs, in affordable housing, trying to address the shortage of affordable housing, and making sure that we are holding property owners accountable for conditions with the change in the administrative court that ultimately will help with our housing. And when we brought the conditions information to, data to you, and the conditions were so, there were about 5,000 homes that were identified as Condition Three, that there, you know, there was some real synergy and priority around putting together programs that would help move those 5,000 properties to ones, to stabilize our neighborhood. So that was some of the conversation that happened in the work session last week, that and the money that we are recommending with regards to leveraging the Welcome Home, you know, is our funding to leverage about $7 million. But that's not the only funding that we have to put into housing. And obviously, like I said, we've put well over, you know, 20-plus million dollars in the last, in all of those programs. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but you've seen those numbers, and we talked about those. We have not yet received any information with regards to the pilot around access and to counsel. That, and the last update I had was that program would run through the year, and then they would share the data with us, and they would share the data with the county, and then we would look at that and try and figure out a way to do that. Because we all, I think, also agree that preventing unhoused situations or evictions is really important, too, because we all know how important housing security is. And while we are doing all of this work to try and stabilize the neighborhoods, to try and add more housing units, we also recognize that over 50% of our residents live in rental units. And so we also are looking at, and I think we reported on this in the work session, if not, it will be coming up in some of the conversations, a pilot program to try and figure out how we do hold landlords accountable. Because the city doesn't have a lot of teeth as it relates to that. We don't have the ability to just walk into private properties, right? Unless we know there is a documented threat of safety or harm, we don't have that. So we're trying to figure out how we bring resources, like we have when we've intervened with, you know, AES and CenterPoint. How do we bring resources to the community? But how do we also hold those landlords accountable for safe and quality housing that everyone should have access to as a basic need? And so there is a pilot that the staffing and the task force that's working through this is trying to put together so that we can have some teeth to, we also have to select the right landlords. We don't want to enhance bad-acting landlords. So how do we even, what's the criteria, and how do we evaluate that, right? These are some of the things the staff are wrestling with, but they want to bring forward a pilot to be able to demonstrate and then sustain going forward. Because we know that over 50% of our residents are living in rental units. And so, that being said, as I said in the work session, you know, the staff are working on a comprehensive briefing package for you all that should be coming, I believe, this Friday, next week at the latest. But you will be getting all of that information to be able to ascertain where we're all at, and then discuss among yourself, are we going in the right direction? What do you want to see? All of that, okay? So I just wanted to make sure that you all know that's still coming, and that we have been working, trying to attack this on all fronts, because I've not found that damn silver bullet yet. So that's where we're, that's where we're at, and I just wanted to make sure that I added some of that global context for you.
No, certainly appreciate that. I know I shared an email that we received, maybe last week, from the tenants' union, I believe it was Monday, and we talked about that briefly in terms of looking at what we can do, and to be able to put together a response to the tenants' union in response to the email that we received. I think it was last week, I think, I'm not sure if everybody received that or not, but just wait, you know, the aspect of doing that would help us a long way in explaining all the kind of issues that you just shared, and explain the concerns that were raised this evening from the members of the tenants' union. So again, thank you guys for being here. Thank you for sharing that, and look forward to receiving information from us as well. Okay. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Have none? Okay. Commissioners, closing comments. Commissioner Charles Lawson.
Yes, I have a couple of comments. Would like to thank Ms. Jen Hanover for the public hearing and going through the various tax amendments. And then it also just speaks to what Ms. Dixie was speaking about in regards to, like, finding that silver bullet and the work that is being done as it relates to housing, and that is one of the pieces that was, in fact, highlighted in the tax amendment, and that is looking at the moving from criminal to civil as it relates to the housing itself, but also those increased fees that go along with that. And so I just wanted to thank Ms. Hanover, as well as the entire planning staff for the work that they completed on the tax amendments. Thank you, Mr. McDaniel, and the entire work of the Housing Department, and all of the great work that they're doing in regards to the removal of the blighted structures and the fire piles. Ms. Elson, excuse me, Elson, thank you, Ray Elson, I believe I have that right. Thank you very much for being here and speaking to access and funding the pilot program for access to counsel. And I look forward to that recommendation and any report that may come out of that. I believe Mr. Marty Garris offices, holding that up, and so, and leading it, rather, leading that effort. And so we just need to probably circle back, and I'll make sure that I'll do that, and just having a conversation elected, elected, to see where we are in that process, and if we can, in fact, gather some additional data to see where we are in supporting that. And just to highlight the work that was, that is currently being done by the Housing Policy Steering Committee. There are four subcommittees, the Housing Trust Fund, Historic Property Preservation, Data, and the Tenants Issue. And so a lot of these concerns, they fall into those various categories for the Subcommittee for Housing. I would like to point out, and I believe I may mention this on the 23rd during the work session, that I drafted and introduced some legislation for a Housing Trust Fund that I sent over maybe last year, a year before last. So I would just ask if we can review that, see where that is. I know that we have the Housing Steering Committee, but if you can share that with them to see if, in fact, how, in fact, we could, what we can do on our part as the legislative body to make sure that we have that go forward, to address the number of concerns and issues that have been laid out before us, and that we know that are overwhelmingly affecting our community. And you're right, we don't have that silver bullet, but there are a number of things that we can do. One, enforcement, making sure that we have the resources that are readily available. And I believe that the Housing Trust Fund would give us that, give us the means to do so. And thank you for the recommendation that you provided to us last week for the Welcome Home Initiative. And I just wanted to uplift the work of the Dayton Tenant Union. You all have been going strong. You have done a lot of great work, your advocacy and your leadership in regards to even putting forward the housing initiative and the income tax renewal that was, was in fact, approved by 71% of the voters in Dayton, and I believe.
76%.
All right. Well, very good. Add that extra 5% on there. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And I believe that that was done because of the work that you all have done, many other community leaders, the work of myself and my colleagues. So again, kudos to you all and what you're doing in raising those issues. Ms. Forte, again, thank you for sharing your testimony, your story. Happy early birthday to you. I know it's next month, but happy birthday to you. Ms. Brown, thank you for your leadership. Your points are well taken. I know that you highlighted the rental registration program, and I want to continue that conversation. And I know we've had some offline conversation about that, Ms. Dixie, Ms. Jackson, and Commissioner Fairchild. So I hope that we can revisit that. I know it's kind of out of our court, if you will, out of our swim lane, but it's something that we need to venture off and have more detailed conversations from our colleagues. And I believe that's in Carl Keese's office, that we need to venture and figure out what in fact we need to do. The lead abatement program, I wanted to make mention of that. I know Mr. Larry Hagan, you mentioned that. So there is a partnership with the city and the county for a lead abatement removal. So that is something that we're actively moving, and we're making progress in that area. All right. I'm just trying to make sure I get all my notes together. Okay. Mr. Lee, thank you for being here. Thank you for your comments. Wish you all the best and continue on your path. I know that you have done a lot of work in regards to your parenting classes and so on and so forth, so continue on that path to make sure that you gain the visitation rights of your children. Ms. Hurston, thank you for your commitment and for being a resident, as well as a business owner in the city of Dayton. And so I would like to have another conversation with you offline, just so I can get an understanding of, like, what process that you went through in its entirety when, once you actually submitted an application for a liquor permit, to see if, in fact, there are any kinks or if there are any disconnects, to your point, as to how people can navigate through the process itself. I'm familiar with that process, being a former City of Dayton employee, but on the business side, I just want to get an understanding of what, if, in fact, there are any disconnects and how people can navigate through that process itself. So I thank you for being here this evening. And the last thing that I would like to mention is Stewart Patterson Park Cleanup is this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Thank you, Ms. Reed, for providing this information, and is also to get ready and to pitch in to help the park get ready for the Taste of Old North Dayton, which will take place. I believe, is that same weekend? The following week? Oh, the 5th. Excuse me. Yes, the 5th of August. And is that the same date as National Night Out? Yes. So, thank you. There are a number of back-to-school events that will take place this weekend. I believe the DPS, Dayton Public Schools, they're having their family festive back-to-school rally, along with Ms. Tay Winston, and it'll take place at Welcome Stadium from 11:00 a.m. into 4:00 p.m. There are a number of events. I believe Northwest Priority Board will have their back-to-school event at the Northwest Library, just a number of things that are taking place this weekend. So I encourage folks to get out. I'm sure Commissioner Fairchild has them all written down, and he'll be able to share that information with everyone. So that's all I have. Oh, it's Art in the City. How did I fail to mention that? Art in the City.
I don't know.
Will take place. Yes, thank you. All right. Charge of mine, not my heart. Art in the City will take place. I just want to highlight a number of artists that will be featured this weekend, and Alexis Reiner is doing some great work, and some of her work will be featured this weekend, along with many others. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, just a couple of questions.
Finish up her list.
Yeah. What's that?
No, finishing up her list.
Commissioner, thank you for your comments, and thank you for the citizens that are here, and it's exciting to see the newest member of the Dayton Tenant Union back there. So congratulations to Destiny Brown and the birth of her son, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. Ms. Jackson, do we know what options we have in terms of the liquor license? I think I asked for that, and I didn't know if I'd seen a response on that.
When you asked the options, can you explain to me what you?
Yeah, I was asking, they had asked whether we had the ability to withdraw.
Yes, sir.
And I didn't know if we did or not, and what.
We have not received all the information, and so what I'll do is get that to you hopefully today, not today, not today, definitely. But you'll get it before Monday.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. And Commissioner, I'm not sure what details I might be providing, but I did want to lift up National Night Out.
There you go.
Okay. So National Night Out is Tuesday night, and there are National Night Events at Old North Dayton, Linden Heights, Westwood, and Dayton View Triangle at the Omega Campus. So invite people to come out, and I think that goes from like 5:30 to 7:30, and they're always great times, and I look forward to see how each neighborhood expresses themselves. I noticed this year, we're starting at Old North Dayton, which is a good thing, because the food won't run out since we're starting there, which is often the case when we get there as the last stop. So I hope people can come out and join us for the National Night Out.
Felons with the Future. What's that?
Two minutes. It's his turn?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ask me for details. Felons with the Future is this weekend.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I don't have those details.
Okay.
Commissioner Shaw.
Well, real quickly, Commissioner mentioned Art in the City. I have that on my, on my list of things. But anyway, our wrecking youth department is hosting Her Time to Play this fall at Lori Recreation Center. It's a free girls' basketball program for ages seven through 17, focused on skill building, confidence, and teamwork. And the session runs September 17th through October 24th, Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And to register or learn about coaching opportunities, contact the City of Dayton Recreation Department. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm sure everyone has been paying attention to all the great things that we have going on in the City of Dayton, and hope you catched all of that. I just want to share with you the clothes at work, that provide free clothing for those individuals, or low-cost clothing for those individuals who are looking for a job. They're also working with the members of this community to do resume building and resume updates, if you will. You will need to call to reserve a time, and with the, just call to register at the Dayton Metropolitan Metro Library, I should say, before August 13th. So it's free, it's resume building, also having the opportunity to get clothes to match your needs as far as employment is concerned. Additionally, North Ranch Branch of the Library is having a festival, and that festival will take place August 2nd from 10:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Lots of food, games, music, school supplies for children, and a lot of the community resource partners will be there as well. So thank you, and I hope you can take advantage of these opportunities, as well as all the information that was shared by our colleagues. So no further business to come before this commission. Love and peace for all, and hatred for none. This meeting is adjourned.